All right, we have returned to open session. At this time, is there any public comment? Are there any proposed board member changes to the agenda? All right, if not, then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, and we, our first item on the superintendent's report is to invite our DLA architects to talk about the Blythe Park visioning process. I know some board members heard this presentation at the coffee that we had for Blythe Park parents and community members, but we wanted to make sure that the board had the presentation and opportunity to ask questions. So Ryan and Steve are here. Ryan, you're going to be our presenter.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for the time. We have been through a series of meetings, community engagements about the Blythe Park auditorium renovation. Some of you were able to join us in that, and that was great to be part of that discussion. So I wanted to give you a little bit of flavor of how that went and what we discussed. This is our design team, most of which you are familiar with. Heather is our lead designer for this project, so she was part of this process as well. So in January, we met with the Blythe Park staff. We talked about educational delivery goals, big picture, what are we trying to accomplish? We know that all-day kindergarten was approved. We know that Blythe Park is looking to move to a two-section school. And so what does that mean for the education and how it's delivered? We came back in February, and then we talked about the facility with that same group. And so how do those educational delivery goals impact the facility? Is it capable of handling that now? And what does that look like in the future? We then met with the PTA meeting, and we basically kind of updated them on our discussions. We had an open discussion about concerns they had, about things that they'd like to see, and it was a really good discussion. We then had two community engagements, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, where really it was just an open forum. We talked about the processes that we had been through, not only with the PTA, but with the staff, and again, voice any concerns that they had. And I think everybody would say that it was a good, open discussion. So our first meeting with the staff, we had part virtual, part in-person, and we really talked about, again, about big picture, educational delivery goals. Things like flexibility came up, storage, consistent place to teach small groups, that was a common theme, looking at breakout spaces, collaboration spaces. So we looked at their highest hopes and then also concerns about what they had. Is there going to be enough space? How would that accommodate dining, music, and art, which were the three primary programs that we were looking at? And then we looked at case studies. We shared with the group some things that we look for in design and some of the things that we heard from that first meeting. So bringing natural light into art spaces, flexible furniture, spaces that are able to do multiple things. So cafeteriums were discussed. So it was a constant theme that some sort of performance space was desired. It didn't necessarily have to look exactly like it looks today, but they were open to seeing how that might support different programs moving forward. Then we, online, we broke out into three groups, and this was a pretty fun exercise. We took the floor plan, and then we gave the groups blocks. We call them programming blocks. So you have a sized block that is sized for art, one for music, one for dining. And then we basically gave them no boundaries and said, what would you do with this? What would you like to see? And how would that look in the context of your existing school? So things that they discussed were art and music could be one space, but ideally would be separate. Light is important. Special education spaces were important. And then they talked about architecturally renovating the existing auditorium space to a multipurpose dining room with an adjacent art and music space. So here, this group was looking at what an addition to the building might look like. And then our second group, some similar themes that you'll see, but they got pretty in-depth with what those spaces might look like, movable walls, green roof on an addition where music and art might be. Natural light was important, multipurpose space with round tables for engagement, flexibility of furniture. And then again, OT and PT space behind the gym, and then architecturally renovating the existing lower-level auditorium for possible multipurpose dining and cafeteria. And then our third group, again, some common themes here, grade-level centers were discussed, advanced level, or I'm sorry, advanced learning and itinerant spaces, so how those might be carved out into that lower level, keeping the stage and auditorium functions. So some sort of performance space was discussed and important. And then more flexible space and also renovating that lower-level auditorium space.
And actually, Ryan, the grade-level center idea would be like, the two kindergarten rooms are next to each other, the two first-grade rooms are next to each other. Because grade-level centers can also mean that, like, a whole different grade level goes to a different school. So I just want to be clear about that.
That was not discussed.
Right, right, right.
That's not in the table. No, it was about how do we keep proximities of grade levels together?
Up to suit at that place.
Thank you. I know you don't like that word, Mark. So they had, they suggested in addition to possibly the south end of the building, where we added classrooms earlier, and that might accomplish some of those goals. The next step is we asked the group in total, give us some of your inspiration images. What, you know, now that we've been through this process, what are some of the spaces that you have gone out and seen yourself or found pictures online? And so these are some of the things that we talked through. Again, common themes of flexible furniture, performance spaces, you know, with movable risers that can, you know, double as other functions within the building, natural light, color. All of these things were things that were discussed throughout. We then took all that information, and we really looked at it in a schematic way and how that would look within the building. So if you remember back, the first group was looking at an addition to the north in the parking lot. We know that that touches many spaces, so we tried to look at each of these and to see what those challenges were to accomplishing some of these options. So this one in particular, we know the parking is at a premium, so putting an addition in that north parking lot represents some challenges. We know that with setback issues, and we also know, having talked to the historic preservation commission, that an exterior addition to the building would be, one, more costly, but also a longer process in review and approval. So that's something to consider. Option three here that we looked at was an addition, as I mentioned, to the south, where we added a classroom before. Again, this has some of the same challenges in terms of parking and setbacks, as well as preservation. And then we do touch a few different areas of the building, making this option more costly than option one that we'll look at here in a moment. So option one has providing, renovating the lower-level auditorium for music and art, offering a flexible barrier, whether that be a sliding wall or folding wall. So then that means that dining happens in the gymnasium. So if we look at the first floor, then we would look to provide some accommodations for that, some casework, some storage for tables. So in each of these scenarios, we also would look at adding a lift to the lower level, because currently that area is not accessible. So obviously, that's a very important piece of any, anything that we would do in that lower level. So this by far is the less costly. We do know that, and we would like to add some windows and openings to bring natural light down there, and we think that that's a possibility and is achievable. That will require preservation review, but a much less lengthy and in-depth review than addition would be. Option one seems to be in step with our timeline and the timeline of the board to, you know, go to full-day kindergarten. That's something that's already in motion. So currently, this is the option that we're pursuing to see what further challenges that we might have with that renovation. So, and that's the team again. So in short, it was quite a full month of discussions and meetings. They, you know, we got a lot of good information and a lot of engagement from the staff and the community, and so we're reporting back to you and looking forward to our next steps. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So is an addition completely off the table with any of these? I know, I was a little bit late to that one afternoon session, but I know one of the parents had asked about an addition in the amphitheater space, which is what it looks like. That would really be the main proposal. I know we had talked about, like, parking being an issue and just regulations around having parking spaces. So that one kind of seemed like a non-starter, but I don't know how people would feel about killing off that amphitheater.
I don't think that's ever been even a contemplation to kill off that public space.
Yeah, it's just next to it.
Yeah, I feel like that's going to be a difficult community thing, even if we wanted to do that, let alone a village, you know, historical.
It's more like at the ends of the building.
Yeah, it's at the end. So that drawing isn't in the amphitheater, it's next to that?
And I know where Wesley, Wesley, I know where you're, if you look at the Group One slide, it does show a shape.
The blocks around.
In the amphitheater.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, right? Because I'm trying to take this image and put it on the aerial photo, and I think the only place you have is the amphitheater. There's really not a lot of space to add on this building.
No, Ryan, if you look at the bottom picture.
Oh, it's just that little thing down there? Okay.
Yeah, that's not quite, you can see the curve is starting a little bit further up there.
Yeah.
And the other.
Okay. I was looking more up at the top, where you got that long rectangular block as a potential 58, 5600, whatever. I can't remember.
It's a little bit confusing in the layout, because they're rotated. But in any case, we would not be looking at touching the amphitheater.
Gotcha, okay.
But I think to answer your question, I mean, each of the additions just have, they're more complex, so we would need to engage the village, engage preservation, if that was the direction we wanted to go. And they're more costly.
Well, to your point, Ryan, it's not just the village and preservation, it becomes the water reclamation district and...
Everybody.
It's everybody, and we know how long involving everybody.
Yeah, I feel like we just went through that.
How much time that can add to.
It's a different project than we've discussed before in the context of the lower-level renovation.
I don't think the prices are ballpark prices are on this report, though, but I think when we spoke at the session, it sounded like there were two options that were kind of pretty close and anticipated.
No, they're, I looked at, Ramesh did a, David asked for Ramesh to do a cost estimate, and option one is about 2.1 million, option two is, comes in around 3.2. And option three, which is the biggest one, bottom left corner, is 3.6. So as we get into more complicated coordination issues, price also starts to just go up for the infrastructure itself.
But out of all the options that are listed, none of them will leave the basement auditorium intact, correct? They will all be, it's changed no matter what option is picked?
Correct. And each of the options, we're looking at... Renovating the lower-level auditorium to be a combination of music and art, but then also flexible to open up, to be a performance space, you know, when needed.
Yeah, so it's not that it kills off the auditorium, it's that it makes it so that it can be usable as a performance space with some moving around a furniture or movable wall or such. But there's still a stage.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about the, I know they're hard to see, but talk about some of the details. But if we look at the plan, all the way to the right here, to the left in the lower level would be art. If you can see sort of that accordion door, that would be the movable wall that allow you to separate the two spaces when desired, or open it up if you wanted to use the entire space. Music would then be all the way to the right. It's a little bit higher-volume space, which music desires. In between those two, that look like steps, those are in fact steps, there would be sort of deeper, longer risers. Think of Ames Learning Stair, similar to that. So it would allow for that flexible seating and kind of a performance space when that was opened up. We would still, because of the grade change, we would still have a ramp all the way to the top of the page, and then we would have a lift where the existing stairs now. And then we would look to bring in as much natural light as we could.
And students would eat in the gymnasium, I think you said that part. I think originally we thought, could we get, as you said, dining, art, music, all in the same space? And I think, you know, the thought was that you would give up so much with each thing that it would be better to just say, make that art and music, still full-on, open, flexible performance space when those occasions come up, and then the children would eat in the gymnasium.
Is this, Martha, is this option sufficient for 15, 20 years down the road? Or are we just shuffling people from different places in the building? Because I would hate to, five years ago, man, I really wish we had done option two for an extra 800,000 or something like...
That is a good question, considering we just renovated.
No, because this, this makes it suitable for a two-section school, which has always been the goal.
Without any additions, extra classrooms or anything like that, like you proposed in a couple of the others? Because your numbers are surprisingly low for, like, a lot of this added-on construction. I thought you were going to go much higher than an extra million, million and a half or whatever you just threw out there, Joel. So I'm just, I just, as long as it fits our future, like, long-term needs, because I would like to, at some point, be done with construction projects.
I mean, it's a great question. It's really hard to predict 15, 20 years down the road. The thing that I will just acknowledge, and as we look at our full-day kindergarten spaces, and we look at, let's say, a growing EL population, for example, is another thing we've talked about in terms of space, we have not built to access anywhere. You know, not with our renovations at the other schools. I think we've done some great work. I mean, we would not be offering full-day kindergarten if we hadn't done the work that we've done. We have not built to expand, you know? So if enrollment were to, in some not-understood and not-predicted way, go up, which can happen in communities, we're not ready for that, you know? So I think that's, that's always a really good question. There's no clear-cut answer. We know if there were additional rooms, we would fill them with something, right? I mean, where we have children in small-group learning spaces, and some districts, they're in larger-group learning spaces. We don't have any of those. I mean, we're, we're kind of, we will be maxed out here with children eating in the gym, which, again, I don't think is a bad thing. Kazmira Gorman, as principal, doesn't think it's a bad thing. It's, you know, it's a lovely gym with a lot of natural light, and that does not seem to be a problem. But when you stop and think, that is the thing we just worked to undo at Hollywood, you know, by building the multipurpose room. So we've thought a lot about, obviously, the parity between the schools. Each school is so different architecturally, each school is so different in terms of enrollment here, that it's just, I think those are the unique features of District 96, that we've kind of come to say, like, okay, this is a, you know, historically significant school. All the schools are really landlocked. Parking is a significant issue in this community. Street parking is problematic. Like, every, sort of everywhere we twist, we turn, we contemplate, we run into obstacles, we run into barriers. So some can be undone, some can be undone if we're willing to take potentially the longer look at things. So it's a really good question. I'm not sure I answered it.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're going to have explosive population growth in the students. I mean, we're landlocked. There's only so many houses you can buy in this district, and the turnover rate, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we should build, like, double the size of the school for, you know, 20 years down the road. But I just feel with Hollywood and Blythe, it is so tight, and they're so small, and the buildings are so old. It's like, we'll just move these pieces around. And I just wonder, like, are we just moving pieces around, or does it actually suit the needs that we have?
Right. So my question for clarification, to make sure what I'm hearing is, we don't know about 15 years, but we do know that with full-day kindergarten, and it's soon, within a year or two, being a full, full two-section school, this solves, there's a classroom?
This would give us enough space, yeah.
And I think I asked at the, at one of the coffees, I asked Kazmira her opinion on that too, and yeah, she said the same thing about eating in the, you know, the gym was, works for this, for that school, it would work. So, yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure, like, I don't know about 15 years, but I wanted to make sure for my own, like, this does suit.
We can do full-day kindergarten, we can be a true two-full-section school.
Right.
Yeah, and we can maintain this, this idea of performance, large group. You know, it is, you know, right now, it tends to be Veterans Day, talent show, holiday music. I think they, I think there's some other, just all-school activities. So having that, that large-group space is really, is really a nice feature.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not short-sighted. I mean, I know a million dollars isn't anything to blink about, but, you know, five years from now, that's going to be four million dollars. So just trying to think a little bit longer term.
To your point, this is not short-sighted. This gets Blythe to where we talked about with a two-section school. It is, becomes a legitimate two-section school with all the rooms necessary and all the space necessary to provide the...
All the activities outside of a standard classroom and all that kind of stuff.
But I'm hearing there's definitely no functional difference between the three options in terms of usable space. I guess there's an atrium on one.
You actually are getting another classroom, so you're kind of getting that buffer classroom.
So if we look at, if I could...
Yes, thanks.
So if we look at option three, you are adding two classrooms here to the south. So you are adding some space. With option two here, you would be adding an addition where art and music would go, so dining would go at the lower level and performance, and so that would not be in the gym.
But that eats into the parking lot space, which causes other issues, right?
But it does eat up the parking lot, right. So that would, has obviously its own challenges.
Yeah.
And what I think you were saying, Joel, if we're, if we were to pursue an option like that, it would be a much longer, lengthy process.
Correct. You're taking away parking, which now means you have additional village issues to deal with. Once you go outside the four walls, or 12 walls, whatever they may be, thank you.
The walls.
You have to then go in front of historic preservation.
Right, right, yeah.
Parking is, getting rid of parking, adding additional stormwater issues is going to make for a much longer process.
The other thing that, to your point, Joel, the other thing to consider is that it does lengthen the timeline of all those things. So the reality of completing this by summer 2023 with an addition is probably not likely.
Yeah, and they're already going to be tight this year. And when you have a second section of the fifth-grade class, then you, something would need to happen. I know we're only kind of at, well, some of the beginning stages of engaging with the community through the visioning workshops, and I know the one that I attended, you know, at least in that one, the members of the community seemed really satisfied with the internal renovations in terms of it meeting the needs. I didn't hear a lot from the community, like, really pushing for, like, the additions, the extra. I think they understood the constraints with, like, the, you know, the lines, the parking, the historic preservation, the timeline. Maybe for them, not the cost, you know, if they wanted to pay for it. But I don't know what any other people's experiences or sentiments have been in working with the community, if people feel like the internal renovation seems suitable for the families as well, as far as we know.
Living in the area, I can say that there's definitely a lot of respect for the building itself. I knew there was some, people weren't uneasy about the last renovation that was done there. If we were to do additional exterior renovation, I'm sure there would be similar uneasiness, given its historic nature. Now, that said, I have heard as well, both before and now, and it's really concerning that there's no option that leaves things intact. People do have a sentimental attachment to the way the auditorium is currently set up and confined. I know that it's not used that often. It's a space that we're looking for at a premium, that's only used a few times a year for different performances, but people definitely, that I've spoken to, have a sentimental attachment to how that's just, they like the way that it is now, I guess. And that I'm sure there will be a loss to the community if that's gone.
Well, and that's something that DLA is trying to protect by allowing for it to be opened up in those...
And that's a great thing, definitely. You can use some, some natural light down there, absolutely.
Repurposing the wood panels that are intrinsic to the school. So, I mean, we did discuss those things in the community engagement, and they seem to be well-received.
Okay. I mean, I guess the thing is, this is the way I look at these renovations, is this school is, was built, like, 50-plus years ago. It was a state-of-the-art school at that time. It is not a state-of-the-art school today, and we need to bring it up to the state of the art. We need to respect the history, but we need to move forward to the 21st century. And so if, I guess, from my opinion, if we have to put an addition on, if we have to take out the stage or the auditorium to meet the needs for the 21st century, then we do that, because we have to focus on not 1950, but 21st century.
1948, just to say.
1948.
Ryan will jump in and add or subtract to what I'm about to say, but actually, right now, with the way the rooms are configured, with the amount of glass, and the rooms are relatively large, they are pretty up-to-date in terms of what they provide for ambiance. And I point to these windows here that we see. The goal has been more light, opening windows, trying to maintain that. So probably to get to the 21st century aspect, a lot of that's some technology and perhaps...
No, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to say it's not important, I think we need to respect, but I did, I don't want us to be guided so much by, let's honor the past, but let's move, let's move forward to the future, because that's what I feel is the most, most important.
Just in this last minute, a thought has occurred to me, and I wonder if it's in this bit, because I know a previous board member had made the point that when we had set this project here, that the windows do not open, and we found ourselves in a pandemic where we would really have liked to have opened those windows. I didn't know if that had been worked into any of those plans.
We haven't gotten to that point yet. I mean, that is something that we've discussed, inoperable windows are much more energy-efficient, and that's why we did that here. Hollywood, obviously, we were in a different time, and those are operable. So that's something that we could definitely explore.
There's, I'm sure there are pluses and minuses to it.
Well, they'd be clear story, so it's a, they'd be kind of at grade level, so there are challenges in terms of security. So we'd have to weigh those, but we certainly would explore that for sure.
Okay.
The other piece that I wanted to add with this investigation, we also looked at the boiler, and we had our engineer come in and do an assessment of that. The boiler itself is nearing the end of its life. It's about 21 years old. Steam boilers usually last about 30 years. The boiler feed system is what is failing on, on this unit, so it is something that is included in the numbers that we discussed to replace that. So right now, there's a single boiler, steam boiler. We'd look to replace that with a two-boiler system, hot water, which would remove that feed system. So that would be part of this project as well.
Any idea how much that costs? Like, as a portion of the overall?
I think, I haven't seen Ramesh's final numbers, but if we talk construction costs, it's around $400,000 to $500,000.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Again, that's a, and your, your hot water boiler will last longer, you usually get about 40 years out of that. Steam boiler's not, not quite as long.
But we do forego nine years, it sounds like, of at least projected usable life if we were to replace the component that was failing?
If we looked at it next year, I mean, it is starting to fail, so is, I mean, 30 years is a typical. Could it last a few more years? It probably could. You'd need to make some repairs to the boiler feed system that helps it create the steam. I don't know exactly what those repairs would be, and if you might offset those by just a replacement that you know is coming anyway. But we can certainly look into that and weigh that, that option. The, I mean, the other thing that you look at is, you get some economy of scale. If we're already doing this project, to include it, then your costs usually would come down, you know, unless you, or if you did it standalone, you would, you know, certainly pay more.
Sure.
Sure. I would assume also that new boilers are more efficient as well?
I'm sorry?
The new boilers are more efficient?
They are more efficient, yeah, exactly.
So in terms of next steps, the feedback that you've had, the questions, we'd go back and have more discussion at Facility Advisory, and then I guess it would, you know, are we going to move forward with, I guess, Joel, I'm looking to you, you know, move forward with sort of pursuing what would be the next steps with the option of the all-interior renovation, not the additions?
Yeah, I think we'd be looking for... Yeah, I think we'd be looking for some direction to take it to a design development stage and, you know, start looking at some of the construction of what that, what that would entail.
And you've said it, but it's, I think it's worth repeating, is we're, we're looking ideally at summer of 23. So it's, you know, it's not a summer of 22. I think there's some people that think when we were in the engagement piece, it was like, oh, this will happen this summer. It wouldn't be this summer.
No.
We would hope to go a bid in January, like.
Part of the reason I was going to say, we would have to be at the bidding stage.
Or December, maybe.
Yeah.
Correct.
Typically with a project like this, we'd want to bid at end of the year, you know, I mean, November, no later than December in order to get good numbers for the summer 23 construction.
Yeah. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to your two points about community engagement, I would say, I just, I don't remember when it was written, maybe a week or two ago, but there was one person that wrote in saying that their kids and their grandkids all went through Blythe. And there was the sentimental value of that auditorium, but you know, needs change. It was, it was an interesting article. So if you want, I think it was like in either, I think it was a letter or the editor. It was in the landmark, yeah, under the editor opinion.
It wasn't a letter to the editor.
Yeah, it was that cozy.
It was a column?
Cozy corner.
Yeah, that's where it was, okay. So just if you're interested, it was, it was an interesting.
I think it was also an invitation to come to the coffees and, and, yeah, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. The other area, I just want to update you on your superintendent's report is COVID. We were very excited last week. We had our first week of zero COVID cases since, I shouldn't say, we, I think the first two weeks of school, we had zero COVID cases also. But we're very excited this week. It looks like maybe we have one case, the week's not over yet. But anyway, that was a nice shift. Certainly reflects the shift we're seeing in the, the greater community as well. Also updating you just on the COVID vaccination rates, there's some changes with the Hauser number. And really it was more, I think, from digging into the record keeping a little more carefully than, it doesn't seem that there's a lot of shift in vaccination status. There's actually some slight, like partial percentage trending down. It's because the enrollment number has changed a little bit at the school. So if you're curious about that. I mean, I think our vaccination rates are good. We'd like to see them even better. But important information for us to continue to keep an eye on. And then continue to share with you our saliva screening participation. I know when we went to the masks, recommended but not required phase, a lot of parents did email and say, will you still be doing saliva screening? You know, so I think that has felt like another really important safety layer for families, for students, for staff. So we are continuing to do that. You know, I have not talked to Shield about next year, but I, I can certainly reach out and just sort of understand what's on even their possible horizon. It's hard to anticipate what next year will bring. So we're hopeful about trending in the right direction, yet we look at some of the national news or international news, I should say. And we, we just don't know that yet for sure. So the other thing I just wanted to, to bring up to all of you, I know we're sitting here kind of partially, you know, some masks and some not masks. But we have as, you all have as the Board of Education, but have our regular meetings. We have shifted our location, we've been socially distanced, we've been meeting all meetings here at Ames because it allowed us to sort of be at our greatest extent with social distancing. We didn't rotate, we haven't been rotating to the different schools. We haven't been meeting at Hauser, which was our more typical board meeting location. You know, we've certainly shifted away from our virtual meetings. I'm hoping we don't have to go back to that, maybe ever. But we also have been accepting virtual public comments. Someone has said, is that just a COVID thing or is that something we would do in a more ongoing way? Our student presenters, we haven't had student presenters. So again, we got away from a lot of our pre pandemic sort of organizational details, as well as some of our traditions. I know, I think we all look forward to going back to some of those. You know, there's kind of the, do we finish this school year, kind of continue to meet at Ames and with our modifications in place? Look at next year as kind of a fresh start, are people eager to go back to rotations, different seating configurations? I'm just interested in your thoughts on some of that.
Do you want to start moving around again?
I actually was going to ask last time if we could start the rotation again.
If people are comfortable, I mean, this, I think we're three plus feet apart, right? For a while, I think we're even more, right? So you can measure, we'll get the yards together. But so we can, we make our announcement about our next meeting, we could return regular board to Hauser. And then our committee, the whole meeting is rotated. Was our, the plan was that was how you all had an opportunity to get into each of the five schools. Probably go A for Ames and be right back here.
Would we be able to, I guess the audience, I'm trying to think, the audience at Hauser before was kind of stacked one on top of another. So maybe that would be a little bit more spread out perhaps, or maybe it doesn't need to be, I don't know.
Yeah.
We probably don't need as many chairs.
Probably not, no.
Yeah. And actually, there's a way at Hauser, you know, if you were sort of in the more traditional board setup and then the seats and then there's that little side part of the library. So if you did have a crowd, I think you could accommodate, still with some, some distancing.
It would be good to, what, get the introduction and the status updates from the principals at the different schools again.
Yeah.
Be nice to see the students again.
Yeah.
Congratulate them and hand out certificates and the like, but that's.
I think we're going to have some student presenters in April. I'm looking at Angela, Sarah Hickey, our instructional coach. And there's a project between, I think, middle school art and kindergarten. Okay. Okay, okay. So we're, we're looking at that possibility, bringing students in to, to present. It won't be the student achievement. I think we did that every trimester when there were the different awards. But we also did just, you know, students featuring something unique or special that was going on in their schools in terms of their learning. So we will, we will start to inch back toward normal if that's comfortable for people.
Yeah.
So I, I do think we should probably eliminate the public comment, the email public comment. I don't think we need that anymore. I understand that might, I mean, the people can email us and give us the opinion, but they actually want us to say something. I think that we, we need to have them come down here to speak.
What do you mean for us to say something?
Well, they send us emails and then we respond, and then we like read their emails. I mean, last, last board meeting, some of the emails were pretty nasty. And it's really easy to sit behind a keyboard and write whatever you want to write and then have somebody read it for you. I think if they want to say something nasty like that, or even something nice, they need to come down here and say it.
The emails are signed. I, I grant you, we definitely took it on the chin last meeting in terms of public comment. I honestly don't have a problem with it. I, I, I hear what you're saying, that, that if we're here, it seems like if, if folks want to say something to us, maybe they should have to make that distance to.
Right, because they can still communicate with us. They can still communicate with us with email and we do get plenty of email.
We do.
And so, but if they want to speak something, I mean, I don't think we should be the proxy for them to speak.
I don't know how anyone else feels about it. I actually don't have a problem with it. I think it's, it's fine. If it gets people more, if, if it's, if it's a dividing line between someone interacting with us and not, I would rather have that interaction.
Yeah, I, I, I can argue both sides of this. I also feel like there are parts of the pandemic that allowed us to create new access points. And that's a good thing for people to feel like they can be, you know, like, you know, not everybody's free Wednesday at seven. I don't have a strong feeling either way, I don't think.
I guess, I guess, let me ask you this, what's the, what's the point of public comment? Public comment is for them to come to talk to us in person. I mean, there's so many ways of communication. And so I, I guess the way I, I look at public comment is coming from that person. They can send us emails, I mean, we get emails, we respond to every email.
I think, I think that the point of public comment is more for an opinion to be heard by the public. Cause when they're just emailing us as a board, nobody else in the community is seeing that. Cause it's just, so I think the point of public comment is to, to make it, you know. Obviously it's not a discussion with the board, but it's like, I have these concerns or thank you, or you know, whatever they want to say. So I think, you know, in this digital age, commenting can be that way. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just, I can argue both sides of it. Cause I do think that when you increase access, you might increase participation in the process. But also you're right, there is the avenue of then, you know, the faceless comment, you know, but.
Other than last meeting, I don't know that we've had that issue before. I don't know that anything's cropped up that's been too bad.
I understand, I think I, I see where you're weighing both sides. And that is, there is the participatory aspect. But I think to David's point, I don't think it's our responsibility to read people's emails if they've got something to say. If it's that important to be heard and have it be publicly read here, then.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'm, I'm okay with asking people to show up and make whatever schedule changes they need to be, need to make to show up here to have that voice. That we're not preventing the emails, we're not, we're not cutting off participation in any way. But if you want to have that public voice, you can send a letter to landmark, you can come here and speak. You can, there are avenues.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add to the reasons for why, but I was somebody who asked, like, when are we going to get, you know, rid of this? Is this just in regards to COVID and allowing people a safe avenue to, to engage? But, you know, similar for the reasons stated, I don't necessarily think it needs to stay. If, if anything, I'd much rather the public come and engage or at least have their comments, you know, put on record out loud in person. Meet twice a month, hopefully they can make something work, you know.
It was a COVID accommodation. I mean, it was part of the virtual, virtual public meetings, so virtual public comment. So yeah, that's where it came about. It is interesting to, I think it is for the board to consider and decide certainly.
We're not deciding this tonight, right? We're just talking about it?
Yeah, we don't have to.
I don't have an opinion tonight.
Yeah, yeah, good, okay. So we're not ceasing virtual public comment, we're, we're considering.
We're talking about.
Yeah. But we are going to shift back to Hauser for regular board meetings. Look at inviting student presenters on regular board meetings, inviting our principals to give us an introduction on our committee the whole night where we rotate through the schools.
Absolutely, under no circumstances will we accept, accept TikToks though.
All right, that is the superintendent's report.
All right. That brings us then to tonight's consent agenda. Can the board secretary read the tonight's consent agenda?
Yep, tonight's consent agenda consists of meetings of previous minutes from the February 2nd, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting, February 16th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting and February 16th, 2022 Closed Session Meeting. The Personnel Report as presented, Payables Pre-List as of February 28, 2022, Payables Pre-List as of March 16th, 2022. The Ladsy Classroom Lease 2020 for the, for next year, the 2022, 2023 School Year. And the 2021, 22 Employee Wellness Screening. And that is it.
All right. Does any board member have an item that needs to be removed from tonight's consent agenda? All right, if not, is there a motion that the Board of Education approved tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, our next item is the approval of Associate Director of Special Education and Student Services Contract. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the 2022, 2023 Contract for the Associate Director of Special Education and Student Services to Nora Garrity as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I, I will just, so Nora is here in the audience and after we vote, maybe we'll have Nora come up and at least just say hello. But I'm just, I'm very, I'm very excited about this, the process that we've been through to select Nora. I'm excited and very appreciative of the Board of Education that really made a recommendation to have a transition year for somebody to work directly with Pam Shaw's, who will be our outgoing director of Special Education and Student Services. And she will retire in June of 23. I think we really put Nora through the paces with a very rigorous interview process, two very large team interviews, one with 11, I think, one with 17 people in the room after initial screening interview. She did a great job. She comes to us really highly recommended as a great collaborative leader, problem solver, great advocate for children with special needs and children with special learning conditions, special needs within the school environment. We've learned, just talking to Nora, that she seems to be a great fit for our team. And just really looking forward to the year ahead, assuming you all, you know, vote on the contract here, so you have to wait a minute.
All right, well, that's great to hear. And just for clarification purposes, this is a net new position for this year, but will theoretically go away next year.
Right, right. So it's represented in the contract that would be a one year contract, you know, with an agreement to move into the.
Well, the Associate Director.
The Associate Director position will go away.
Yes. Clarify my clarification right here.
And Martha, your point is good and I think it needs to be said again, is this is, this is unique in the public sphere where we actually have overlap between people and positions to allow for learning and getting familiar with the district and getting fully up to speed and really trying to make sure that this very specific service and thing that we provide in terms of special education is going to work well in the future. So we're, we're making a pretty significant commitment to, to continue, to make it, to continue being successful.
Absolutely.
Well said. All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
All right, very exciting. Nora, do you want to come and say hi? This microphone does not amplify, it just goes into the YouTube Live. Not used to that.
Yeah, I didn't tell you that part, did I?
I just want to thank Dr. Ryan Toy and the board for this opportunity. They were two large interview teams, but it was really great to have the chance to talk with and just hear from the staff members, the whole district admin team for being such large groups. It was, they were some of the most comfortable interviews I've ever had. It was just a really good conversation. I'm really looking forward to getting to know all the community, students, families and staff in 96. I recognize that this is a really strong commitment to special education and student services. And I am really eager to get into the work and make sure that we continue great services for all learners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Nora.
All right, our next item on the agenda is Resolution Authorizing Honorable Dismissal of Teachers. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approves the resolution and honorable dismissal for the individuals named in the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So any discussion?
Just a quick comment, like as noted, this is an honorable dismissal. And it is, it's, it's more of a procedural thing to shift organizationally to different accommodations that we need within the staffing structure and that's really all it is. So for clarity purposes, that's why it's an honorable dismissal. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that, but it's really more of an organization.
Right, for us it was a shift from some part time positions to creating a full time position for our EL students and then a part time kid that we will no longer need because we'll be moving to the full day.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next item is Resolution Authorizing Notice of Non Renewal or to Non Tenured Permanent Substitute Teachers. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the resolution authorizing notice of non renewal to non tenured permanent substitute teachers for the individuals named in the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
So just same comment, this is another procedural move. We are going from five that we, so this was pandemic related. We needed some stability within our subs with unknown absences and things like that going on during the pandemic. And so this was a known temporary position at the beginning of last school year. And we're moving from five to three, I think, right?
Yes.
So just another procedural move in how we have to do that in order to accommodate organizational objectives within the staff.
Definitely thank them for their work that they've done in the district.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All right, if not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next on our agenda is RBH, RBHS D96 Orchestra Intergovernmental Agreement. So it's not an action item, but a point of discussion.
Just, yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge for the Board of Education and the community that we are not going to extend the intergovernmental agreement that provided us with a .3 FTE orchestra teacher, and then the additional part of the position was at Riverside Brookfield High School. The way the IGA is written, it, it indicates that it was written for one year, the '21-'22 school year, and that if, if interested in extension, we would do that extension in writing by April 1st. So, we're not going to extend the IGA, and again, want to point out, it's not a performance issue. It was actually, I think, for the one year, the system worked really well. I would say both districts just have fluctuating enrollments, schedules, programs, where the sort of clear plan for us to continue to collaborate on this just, just isn't so clear anymore. And also, as you know, we are hiring one additional elementary music teacher. It's because of our full-day kindergarten, it's because of the Blythe II section, but we are going to work with our elementary music department and, and look at the integration of band, the beginning band and orchestra into those positions, and again, just move forward and look at our, at our opportunities, our efficiencies, making sure that we're really providing the highest quality programming for our students, particularly those fifth-grade students that are just learning a brand-new, whether it's string or band instrument. It's something I know Angela has given a lot of time and attention to in working with the team at RB. I've had a lot of conversations with the superintendent. I don't think we took it lightly at all to sort of not extend this, but for right now, it doesn't meet our needs, and we'll be looking at how to, how to best meet the needs of kind of all the, all the important pieces of our music program. So appreciate everyone sort of being flexible as we problem-solve our way through it. But no action required.
With no action required, it will essentially expire.
Yeah.
Best of luck to Mr. Loeb on that. All right. And next is the Riverside Education Council. No, any statement from REC this evening? All right, if not, next are board member comments. Anybody been in a school lately?
Actually, how did the, how'd the thing Monday go? I wanted to go, but scheduling.
I think that's what happened to a lot of families, and we had about three in-person and nine on Zoom. So, yeah, really poorly attended, unfortunately. I think it's just hard for people, you know, we were like, was it a Monday? You know, what was it? It's hard to know. We said maybe people are out of practice of coming to, you know, in-person events. I just think people's schedules really shifted during the pandemic, and it's, it's hard for families anyway to get out. But even the Zoom was, was hard, and I know the presenter did not want it recorded. That's very typical of a presenter that's being, you know, paid for the presentation to not make it widely available as a recording. But I think it was a great topic, and we know the speaker was really good. She had also spoken to our staff on Institute Day, so unfortunate, but understandable to some degree too.
Okay.
This was, what was it, parenting in the age of COVID?
Yeah.
Pandemic parenting, someone said maybe we should have called it post-pandemic parenting. We've been more hopeful.
I think it was a good topic, I mean, I'd like to, whatever we can do to get more of that information out to all, everybody, parents, students, staff, and all that kind of stuff. I mean, it's a pretty important thing, just to, I think, and the more you talk about it, the more it de-stigmatizes just mental health and all that kind of stuff. So, I appreciated the effort to try to get it put up, and I had every intention in going, and somebody had to watch my kids.
That matters to you.
So I apologize, I was not able to attend in person.
Anybody else? Now, I was raising my hand, I was at Hauser, what was it, last week for the bands coming together for, for all the other bands from D96, and then bringing in the RBHS band, of which my daughter's a member in the junior, junior level. So, it was a nice, nice show, nice performance. It's good to see, what, it's been a while since I've been back in the Hauser auditorium, so it's good to see the, everybody getting together, and wow, first time for a lot of folks since we haven't had these events that happened these past couple of years, so. Nice being out, nice being amongst folks and seeing some good music performed, hearing some good music performed. All right, if nothing else, then we will continue on to committee reports. First up is Personnel Committee.
We just went through everything I've been working on, so we pass the baton.
All right, next is Policy Committee.
We're about to go through everything. So, all of the Press 108, the remainder of Press 108, which are under Old Business Action Items for tonight. I don't know, Kathy, you heard some rumblings that maybe Press 109 is somewhere on the horizon, but we just shut that talk down right here. No, no, it's not.
Let's get to 108 before we talk.
Keep on in November, I mean, we're still very much on time, they're not doing, you know, till the end of the month, so we're still fine time-wise. Vote on those in just a bit.
All right. Next is Facilities.
We will be scheduling a meeting shortly for, to continue discussion of Blythe, obviously, and then the Hauser Central Campus, and then also the Hauser Central Auditorium. More to come.
Okay, sounds good, and then next is Education.
Yeah, we met on Thursday for our, our meeting. Just discussed topics coming up for the April Committee of the Whole. The anticipated topics are specialized programming and supports EL in special education. We were talking about how in the last two years, those are topics we haven't really been able to, at the board table, I know they've been focused on, at the board table, have a conversation about, so we're, we're excited to bring those topics forward. And we just, Angela gave some updates about the math curriculum that you've already heard about, but some details on piloting new, new curriculum, so we'll hear more of that later too.
All right, and last but not least, Finance.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. All right, then, that will bring us to Old Business. And the first item is the Press + 108 Update Memo, Second Reading and Approval. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the second reading and approval of Press + 108 Policies pertaining to Sections 6 and 7 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so any discussion on this? I think there are some that we will need to determine our answers.
Yeah, yeah, we need to have a little bit of discussion as, just continuing from our Committee of the Whole meeting. So some of the policies that we'll be voting on do have board member questions, so just want to make sure that I have those, draw your attention to those. Most of them are already answered, kind of in our discussion, seem to be aligned with what we, the default questions with the way in which we wanted to answer. There is still one, however, that has not been answered, and that's specifically, what is it, 7160, Student Appearance. So again, I know we had conversation on this last time. My recommendation would be for us to adopt the more expansive language, which also then captures protected classes named under our policy 710, which includes things like religion, gender, gender expression, et cetera, other protected classes. So, you know, we did not have, I think, very strong guidance one way or the other from press or otherwise. So my suggestion and recommendation would be the more expansive, but certainly open to hear other views.
And that's where we were kind of at at the last meeting. And we were kind of like, why wasn't that the default?
I think that's where we were at. Now, it did occur to me that, that not on this policy in particular, I know we've received guidance in the past from council, that when we have an option of, of taking a policy in or potentially, you know, if we have, if we have a question of yes or no, that if it's, it's, there are better aspects to it to, to take the default. And that, again, not that I would foresee this issue coming up, but under a certain set of circumstances, it could expose the district to liability that wouldn't otherwise be there. And that, not saying that we're taking anything away from this policy, that we would, the district would not enforce it or the district would not, you know, look to protect these classes in any way differently, but just not adopting the formal policy, or this aspect of that policy.
I mean, I think if we're going to do that aspirationally and do that in practice, I don't see why we wouldn't memorialize it in writing. I think it's also just more inclusivity, it goes to, it aligns better with our new kind of strategic goals and initiatives that fall under this. You know, the parents, I think it just, it also serves as a signal, you know, to the members of the community that they, they're protected, you know, in policy it matters that much to us to kind of, you know, put our money where our mouth is and actually.
Or we can just change the policy and just say, no discrimination.
I know, yeah, I know, that's what you, that's the thing I always want. No. No. As simple as that would be, you know, but enumerating the different classes and listing them, obviously, is the method.
No, and I agree with you, let, let, I mean, even though we, we, even if we didn't approve it, we just took the default of no, I do feel it has to be memorialized, as you stated, I mean, in the policy.
Other?
I, I feel the same way, it's already in our other, the equal. I don't remember what the number of that other policy. We already state this, so I don't know why it wouldn't be stated here either. So, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable going with the yes and not the default no.
So I'm not sure procedurally, because this is a motion, if we are able to then kind of amend it or answer it as yes, and so then when we vote to approve these policies, it would be voting on it with the expansion. So, yes.
So it's like modifying the motion that would include the expanded language for 7160.
So there are like, at least three that I think of that we have to answer one.
But we already have, the rest are all answered.
They're all answered, okay.
We hadn't finalized the answer.
I see, okay.
Then in addition to making the motion, I think we add to that motion that 7160, the answer is yes.
Yes, 7160, the answer is yes. And then the other item for discussion is 660. I know there was concern, understandable concern with the striking of certain language, the word democratic from democratic principles, as well as, gosh, it's so hard to read it, freedom, justice, and equality. So we were advised that we were able to, we are able to keep those in. We continue to teach to those standards anyway, and it sounded like the board had a problem with actually removing those. So given that we will continue to teach, you know, democratic principles, et cetera, we should keep those in. I know right now, the, the way it's listed in Board Book that we're voting on has them, those words stricken, but my understanding from our last Committee of the Whole meeting and the sentiment of the board is that we want to keep those in, and we have no issue per, you know, press guidance to do so.
Was there any guidance from press on why they took them out, why it was taken out?
I don't know, they decided that.
They just went and cited the original Illinois code, that the code did not specifically mention those words.
But we can.
But we can. We're expanding upon the American values that the code represents, that the code talks about.
So we're just another, I guess, procedural change to the motion, because right now they're excluded.
Then for 660, Curriculum Content, to, for item number seven, to continue to maintain the use or the position of the words, democratic principles of representative government, the Constitution of the United States of America, sorry, and the Constitution of the United States of, of the State of Illinois, freedom, justice, and equality, proper use and display of the American flag.
Thank you.
Yes.
That works for me.
My copy is easy to read.
I was going to say, I might need some help on reviewing that one, but all right, let's, anything else? Any other changes?
That's all I had, unless I knew we had anything else for discussion.
Let me get back here to the top. All right, well then, so we shall amend the motion. So is there a motion that the Board of Education, excuse me, approves the second reading and approval of Press + 108 Policies pertaining to Sections 6 and 7 as presented? Also amending for Policy 7160, changing the answer from no default to yes. And so what was the other policy, I'm sorry?
660.
660, leaving in the language that has been stricken in the, the policy in front of us.
In item number seven.
In item number seven.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right, so any further discussion on this?
Nope.
No.
All right, Kathy, can you call the room?
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
Press 108 complete, thank you, Stephanie and Board.
Oh, is that, we don't have to, there's.
Well, the rest are like the CBA.
Is there another one? I thought there was.
Well, there's two more that.
Yeah, there, there's more.
I was going to say, there's more we have to.
Kinda.
Yeah. Two more.
Okay, so yes, that was just Section 6 and 7. Okay, so, is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the second reading and approval of Press + Policies pertaining to CBA as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So any discussion on these?
Yeah, just by way of reminder, I know Shelley reviewed many of these and gave recommendations as you see in the revised language. I don't think there was much discussion otherwise at the Cow meeting.
All right. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, if not, Kathy, can you call the room?
Okay, Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Mur?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Okay, next then is Press 108 Policies Needing Five-Year Review, Second Reading and Approval. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the second reading and approval of Press + 108 Policies pertaining to five-year review as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I don't have anything else to, to add that we didn't already capture in our last meeting.
It's just the five-year review.
The five-year review, it's all good.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Kathy, can you call the room?
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next then on the agenda is New Business, doesn't appear to be anything under New Business.
I know, where?
It is, right. Which then brings us back around to Public Comment.
There is none.
No additional public comment, okay. All right, then, if no additional public comment, and for clarification's sake, I think we're intending to, actually, I'll wait for the motion on that, never mind. So future meeting dates, we talked about that earlier, we have April 6, 2022, Special Meeting Committee of the Whole listed here as aims, were we going to mix them up?
I, I will double-check, we'll check schedules, et cetera, but I wonder if we should meet in the Hollywood multipurpose room? That's the.
There we go.
Check out those big ring lights.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nice-looking room, yeah.
That would be, that would be great, I would love to do that.
All right, so location for now, TBD, potentially Hollywood. Then we have April 20th, 2022, Regular Business Meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room of, well, no.
I think we'll go Hauser Library.
Hauser Library there, yes. The board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM if necessary. We've got a couple more, I don't know if we're ready to mix them up yet, or?
I think we're, well, we would, I don't know about Cow then for May, same thing, we'll look at schedules.
Okay.
But maybe regular board always in the, back to the Hauser Library.
Well, May 4th, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting, 7:00 PM, location will be TBD, and May 18th, Regular Business Meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Library. The board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM if necessary. Let me get here, so yes, then next on the agenda, I believe we were, the board would like to go back in, we had a closed session, that we would like to continue our discussion on that. No action is.